Call for a closed session, there is none tonight. Please ask everyone to rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight, we have 12 special recognitions, that's why you see so many students around you. We're honoring all state sports championships, presidential scholar, all state jazz and thespian winners, and award winners in speech, debate, and publications. In addition, we'll recognize our schools of character, champions of character, and award winners in writing and poetry. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Mike Roth, Director of Athletics and Activities.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, and Dr. Morty, it's my honor and privilege as the Director of Athletics and Activities for Parkway to introduce our state champions from 2016, 2017. This year, we have seven individual state champions and one team champion that we will honor. First, from Parkway West, the girls' track team, the four-by-eight squad, ladies, come on down, please. This was a two-mile relay, each girl ran two laps. They had a winning time of nine minutes and thirty-four seconds, .93. They went by over three seconds, which is about twenty feet, so that's a large distance. Team members include Tess Allgayer, sophomore, Emily Dixon and Junior, Natalie Butler, sophomore, and Chloe Hirst now, a sophomore. They were district champions with a time of 10:04. They were sectional champions with a time of 9:39, so knocked off almost 20 seconds. And then at the state meet, they won with a time of 9:34.93, and they're all coming back next year, so we're super excited. Congratulations to the state state champions from Parkway West. Next, from Parkway North, we actually have two hurdlers from the track team, so we're gonna bring them down both at the same time, so if we could have Jaquiel Suber and Jelani Williams, come on down, please. First, Jaquiel Suber. Jaquiel is a junior and won the 300-meter hurdles with a time of 37.93. He also finished second in the 110 hurdles. He also finished fifth in the four-by-four, running the anchor leg, and he also finished second in the four-by-one meter relay. So he's a four-time All-State athlete this year at North, and only a junior. Congratulations. He also competed nationally last week in an event in New Mexico and placed seventh in the national bid in the hurdles, so congratulations. Next, we have Jelani Williams. Jelani is only a sophomore. He won the 110 hurdles with a time of 14.26, edging out his teammates by one-tenth of a second, so Northwood won two at the state meet. Pretty amazing. He also was a member of the four-by-one meter relay, which placed second at state. He also was a member of the four-by-two, which placed third, and he placed eleventh in the high jump. So as a sophomore, he competed in four events at the state meet, which is truly outstanding. He also was a basketball player, also was a member of the football team, played in the state semifinals at Parkway North, had a great year, only a sophomore. He presently has 11 Division One football offers, so congratulations to Jaquiel Suber and Jelani Williams, over on the four-by-four relay, head coach Jeff Kinney. Congratulations, Coach. And next, from Parkway Central, a senior swimmer, Madison Brown. Madison, come on down. Madison was a state champion in the 100-yard backstroke with a winning time of 58.06. She also placed seventh in the 100-yard butterfly, so she's a two-time All-State champion this year. She's been a four-year varsity swimmer at Parkway Central. Last year, she was also All-State. She helped lead her team to an eighth-place finish at state this year, and she will be swimming in college at Missouri State University next year in Springfield, Missouri. So congratulations, Madison. She was coached by Mr. Jim Myers. Next, from Parkway South, Carson Haskins. Come on down, Carson. You've actually done this quite a few times already, Carson. Carson is only a junior, but he was a state singles champion for Parkway South. What an honor. He finished with a record of 19-0 this year, first place in the Class Two. He defeated Carson Gates from Staley High School, the same opponent he defeated last year. He has a career record of 69 wins and zero losses. He's a three-time state champion already for Parkway South. He has competed in 138 sets in high school. He has won 138 sets, setting a state record for consecutive wins only after three years. He is the second year in a row that he's the St. Louis Post-Dispatch Metro College Metro Tennis Player of the Year. He's a national high school All-American, and in the 88 years of tennis in Missouri, only one other athlete has had the opportunity to win four state titles. Obviously, we don't want to put any pressure on him, but he's well on his way, so he'll have it next year. That was over 30 years ago that happened, so truly, this is a historical athlete and moment for Parkway South. His college choices, he's still undecided, but includes Illinois, Indiana, and Vanderbilt. His head coach on the far side there is Coach Nick Tenurges. Coach, thanks for everything you've done this year, and congratulations to our state champion, again, Carson Haskins from Parkway South. Great work. Next, we have our team awards. If I could please have the Parkway Central volleyball team come on down, please, to the front. They won the Class Three state championship this year with a record of 32 wins and four losses. This is the second state title for head coach Tom Schaefer, third in school history. They were co-conference champions this year, along with Pattonville. They won the Kent Notre Dame tournament. They were district champions, defeating Oakville. So let me introduce the individual team members right now. So gentlemen, I call your name, you can just kind of step forward, please, and give us a little wave. First, number one, Said Ali Cosmi, a senior. Number two, Daniel Roman, a junior. Number three, Lawson Cockham, a junior. Number four, Matt DeKroger, a junior. Number five, Leah Lerner, a junior. Senior, I'm sorry. Number six, Sam Pennett, a junior. Number seven, Jacob Morton, senior. Number eight, Daniel Buffum, junior. Number nine, Matthew Day, junior. Number 10, Jake Demalowski, a junior. Number 11, Zach Keresko, a senior. Number 12, Jack Meyer, a junior. Number 14, Charlie Meyer, a sophomore. Number 15, Nick Arkachewski, a junior. And lastly, a senior, number 16, Jalen Scale. Ironically, our two captains are not here, they're actually competing in a national event. The two captains are Daniel Buffum, he's a first-team All-State as a junior, and the other captain was Zach Keresko as a senior. Zach was first-team All-State. Zach was the MVP of the state tournament. Zach is a first-team All-Metro. Zach is a Parkway Central Scholar-Athlete. He will be playing volleyball next year in New Jersey Institute of Technology. So congratulations to the 2017 Class Three Volleyball State Champions of Parkway Central Falls. Great job. As we're going through, I would also like to recognize all the parents of our state champions with us tonight, so if you could please stand, all the parents of our state champions, please stand. Thank you for your support and encouragement. Good luck. Not sure if I mentioned this, head coach was Tom Schaefer. Coach Schaefer, congratulations. We're not only proud of our state champions for their accomplishments on the field and on the courts and in swimming pools, but we're proud of them for being great leaders in their schools. Good luck to our seniors next year in college, and we look forward to watching our underclass compete next year in Parkway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Next, I'd like to call Dr. Patrice H., Principal from South High, who will introduce our Presidential Scholar and our distinguished teacher. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, it is with great honor that I introduce to you Erin Neely from South High. Erin, will you please come on up? Erin has been selected as one of 2017 U.S. Presidential Scholars from Missouri, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Erin is one of only 161 outstanding American high school seniors who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, artistic excellence, leadership, citizenship, service, and contribution to the school community. The U.S. Presidential Scholars will be honored in Washington, D.C. from June 18th through June 20th, when each honoree will receive a Presidential Scholar Medal. The White House Commission on Presidential Scholars selects scholars based on their academic success, artistic excellence, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. Created in 1964, the U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program has honored more than 7,000 of the nation's top-performing students with a prestigious award given to the honorees during the annual ceremony in Washington, D.C. Erin's science teacher, Mr. Giles, was named the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program Distinguished Teacher. Erin selected Mr. Giles for recognition. Is he with us, too? I didn't get to make it. Erin will be attending Emory University with a probable major in chemistry and a minor in classics or Spanish. She plans to attend medical school. Congratulations, Erin.
Invite Mr. Jeff Latkin, Coordinator of Fine Arts, who's going to present the recognition for our All-State Jazz and Thesbian students.
Good evening, President Beth Feldman, members of the school board, Dr. Marty Mistover, and all others present this evening. It is with great honor that I introduce six extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the honor of having been selected to perform in the 2017 All-State Vocal Jazz Ensemble in Jefferson City, Missouri, at their coral directors convention this July. The All-State Choir is an audition group of 16 of the very best jazz singers in Missouri. The students and applicants range from anywhere from juniors in high school all the way through seniors in college. Of the 16 available spots, Parkway students filled five of those spots, plus one alternate. Meeting Parkway students represent nearly one-third of this year's All-State Ensemble. I want to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing, and guiding these students into the skilled, accomplished musicians they are today. Parents, we'd also like to take the time to thank you for your continuing support and guidance. I would now like to introduce the All-State Jazz Choir students that are here tonight by school and were to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Morty. Not able to be here tonight was North High Jordan Patterson Soprano, and then from West High, we have June Bang Tener. I didn't get to list who was here. We have Katia Frederick Alto. We have Mason Todd Berito. Okay, we have two more. We have Mitchell Veerling Tener and Caroline Vogel Soprano, were any of them able to come in. All right. So it is now with great honor I choose six other extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School theater students who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform in this past year's Missouri All-State Show, which was called Ethne-- I'm just gonna say this wrong-- Ethogenia. These students auditioned a year in advance and were selected out of hundreds of students from across the state of Missouri. After being selected to be part of the show, they committed to rehearsals-- they were committed to rehearsals from April through January to prepare for the performance that took place before an appreciative audience of theater educators, administrators, and parents at the Missouri State Thespians Conference. I want to thank their teachers for their nurturing, motivating, and guiding the students along with their parents, as well for their support along the way. If we can introduce them, I do know these are here tonight. We have from Central High, Elita Bassin, Emily Kay, and Jonathan Scully. And from North Highway, Andrew Evans. Evans was a cast member in the show. Nick Austin. Nick was on the tech crew. And Mary Carter. Mary Austin was on the tech crew for the show. Again, we want to congratulate our All-State Theater.
All right, next, I'd like to call Jenny Profit, High School Coordinator for STEM, and Courtney Jaeger, Middle School Coordinator for Social Studies and Communication Arts.
Thank you. Good evening, President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty Mistover, and all the other parents and community members present this evening. We want to first begin by thanking the administrators, the teachers, and parents of these students for their support and guidance in nurturing and developing their skills and talents. The first recognition is specific to middle school social studies, but these students truly took on an interdisciplinary project. Ms. Lorenz, would you come down as well? Would the following students from West Middle come forward to shake our board members' hands, and as you do so, I will explain their accomplishments. First of all, we have Carl Oswald and Katherine Rain, and they could not be here tonight, but also Arden Dixon and Sarah Frachi. These students worked after school and on the weekends to participate in the Missouri History Day and state competition. Student participants conducted extensive research on a historical subject of their choice and present findings their way by creating documentaries, exhibits, performances, or websites. Over 3,000 Missouri students participate in local and regional competitions each year, and some advance to the state contest at the University of Missouri in April. These students, under the direction of West Middle teacher Chris Lorenz, placed second in the junior group documentary division for Under the Stars of a Star, Sybil Leddington's Story. Sybil was a 16-year-old female, Paul Revere, for her community. Next, we have the Scholastic Writing Awards. The Scholastic Writing Awards are a national competition, and Gold Key winners from Missouri advance to the next level. This competition has 11 categories, from flash fiction to critical essay, and students can submit writing in the genre of their choice. Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mention awards are distributed in each category, and winners are invited to the Scholastic Writing Awards Ceremony at Tantara Resort in O'Sage Beach in February. We will start with the middle school awards, and want to thank their teachers for sharing these award-winning pieces with me. Students, as I call your name, please come forward to shake our board members' hands, and as you do, I will describe a little bit about your piece. First, Sarah Boland from West Middle. Sarah received an honorable mention in the category of short story for her piece titled "The Escape." This clever short story is the tale of an escape artist named Copper, told entirely from the point of view of Copper the Dog. As a reader, I appreciated how Sarah artistically wove the narrative of the internal dialogue of the dog, foiled against the dialogue and reactions of the peoples. Sarah's ELA teacher was Emma Bowman. Congratulations. Next, we have Shiruti Panda from West Middle. Shiruti received an honorable mention in the category of humor for her piece titled "Pandemonium." To read about this roller coaster ride is to feel dizzy alongside the writer and laugh with the writer. As a reader, I appreciated how Shiruti evoked enough emotion that it caused me to smile and experience the ride along with the narrator throughout this piece. Shiruti's ELA teacher was Emma Bowman. Next, we have Ahmad Rafi. Ahmad received a Silver Key Award for his short story "The Match." Ahmad's short story took me on an imaginative and descriptive journey, engaged in dialogue, in which a magic match holds power, too much power. The story expertly built a dynamic character that Ahmad used to reveal the theme. Congratulations. Ahmad's ELA teacher was Kelly Reagan. Our last middle school award winner is Brenda Amble from West Middle. Brenda received a Gold Key Award for her personal essay titled "Why Can't I?" As a reader, I really appreciated how this piece not only explores moments of the intensity of a particular race with sophisticated descriptive language, but gently unfolds the theme around doubt that is often cast onto female athletes. Brenda's ELA teacher was Emma Bowman.
Central High school writers also did extremely well in the 2017 Scholastic Writing Contest. If you're here, please come forward. Kayla Benjamin for the personal essay titled "Changing the World Around Me," Saradap Gudak Goosch for this personal essay titled "Reality Check," Josie Anat for the personal essay titled "Friends Without Benefits," Zaba Neem for the personal essay titled "Stolen Safe Place," Maddy Scannell for the personal essay titled "Escaping the Echo Chamber," Jake Schwartz for the personal essay titled "The Sewer of Years Prior," Jessica Sun for the personal essay titled "Game Changer," Athena Stamos for the personal essay titled "Jump In," Shoshona Weinstein for the personal titled "The Great Gumball Fiasco," and Abby Wilder for the personal titled "Actions and Assumptions." These were all honorable mentions. We also had several students with a Scholastic Writing Silver Key Award. Tony Chin for the personal essay titled "Grab My Hand," Chloe Grant for the personal essay titled "Far, Far Away From the Stress," James Kim for the humor piece titled "The First Kiss," and Kiss stands for kissing is such stress. Helena Willner for the personal essay titled "What to Do When You Don't Know What to Do." We are also very excited to recognize one Scholastic Writing Gold Key winner for high school for her personal essay titled "All the Worlds a Stage and Other Theatrical Clichés," and that's Emily Kay. Our next award is for the Poetry Out Loud winner, that's Emily Bauer from West High. Okay, for the second year in a row, this Parkway student claimed the title of Missouri State Champion in the Poetry Out Loud winner competition. West High's Emily Bauer, coached by Ms. Andrea Benbouvar, earned this amazing honor after winning gold for school and regional competitions. She went on to perform exceptionally well at the national competition in Washington, D.C., placing in the top nine in the country.
Sam Wopinski here from Central Middle. Okay, let me tell you about Sam. Sam was state champion in the Letters About Literature competition. His piece was recently judged at the national level, and he received a national honor award as a runner-up, which means out of all 50 state first-place winners, his piece was in the top three. Yeah, pretty good. So Letters About Literature is a reading and writing contest for students in grades four through 12 sponsored by the Library of Congress. Students are asked to read a book, poem, or speech, and write to the author, living or dead, about how the book affected them personally. Letters are then judged at the state and national level. Tens of thousands of students from across the country enter this competition each year. Sam wrote a powerful and personal letter to Sharon Draper, thanking her for writing "Out of My Mind." His letter explained how the story yelled and build empathy for how hard his sister works to do things that many of us probably take for granted, for how much his parents work to ensure his sister has a voice, and for how important it is for he and his peers to recognize that a little kindness goes a long way.
All right, next, we have the 2017 State and National Speech and Debate Champions. So first, we had students who qualified from both Central and West High School. They both have strong debate teams with winners at both the district and the state level, and they'll actually be heading to the national competition next week. So students from Central High, actually coached by Rod Crawford. Our speech and debate award winners, Emily Fow, who took sixth place in radio broadcasting at the state competition, Daniel Berkovich, and Clarinda Tan, who placed fourth in public forum debate in districts. They also qualified for the national competition but aren't able to attend. We have Ariella Mahoney and Abby Flynn. Ariella and Abby took first place in duet acting at the state competition this year, and Ariella was also the first-place winner in dramatic interpretation at districts, and she will compete in the event at Nationals next week. And then we have Maddy Scannell and Jennifer Hyman. Maddy and Jennifer are two-time national qualifiers. They placed ninth in the country last year in public forum debates. They're also three-time state qualifiers. They finished third for two years, and then this year, they were the state runners-up. After taking first place in districts, Maddy and Jennifer will be returning to Nationals next week. From West High, that's coached by Mrs. Kira Borgsmiller, we have also several award winners, Cheryl Ma and Ryan O'Connor. Cheryl and Ryan placed third in public forum debate as a duo at districts. They will compete in Nationals next week. Cheryl and Ryan double-qualified. Cheryl placed second in districts and will compete also in the program Oral Interpretation, and Ryan will compete in Oratory. Then we have Adida Booty, Jesse Calvert, Peter Patel, and Liza Tera Canova. This team of four placed first in World Schools Debate for the district level. They've been selected to represent the Eastern Missouri in World Schools Debate at Nationals next week. Jesse Calvert also placed third in poetry reading at the state level this year. Next, we have our 2017 Publication Awards. This includes newspaper, journalism, and yearbook. We have a very rich tradition in this district of producing nationally recognized journalism publications. The following students from West High had stories selected as part of the national Best of School Newspaper Online Publication. Carly Anderson, Sidney Kinsey, Justin Cups, Samantha Gaddis, Bridget Noonan, Maddy Hoffman, Nell Juscowiac, and Hannah Hoffman. As part of the National High School Journalism Convention Write-Off Competition, there were some West High students who also earned an honorable mention. There are Danny Fisher from Newspaper Review Writing. There are Danny Fisher from Newspaper Review Writing. Haloma Gonzalez for Yearbook Economics Copy and Captions. And Ashley Spillman for Yearbook Student Life Copy and Captions. As part of the National High School Journalism Convention Write-Off Competition, these West High students earned a rating of excellent. We have Nell Juskojak for Newspaper Editorial Writing. Kaylee Tipelman for Yearbook Cover and End Sheath Design. Olivia Ryman for Yearbook Club Copy and Captions. And Sidney Kinsey for Newspaper Feature Writing. The following students earned the top ranking of Superior Award at the National High School Journalism Convention Write-Off Competition. From North High, we have Anna Arnold for Yearbook Student Life Copy and Captions. From West High, Casey Berg for Yearbook Sports Copy and Captions. And then also from North High, Mercedes Nesbit with a newspaper photo, Boy Scouts at the This year's West High newspaper staff, who's advised by Ms. Deborah Cleavins and of which many of the students just recognized are part of, also earned the National Scholastic Press Association All-American Rating with five marks of distinction, and they took sixth place Best of Show Award at the Seattle National Journalism Competition. The West High yearbook staff also took home some top national awards this year for last year's yearbook. The Best of Show Award at the Indianapolis National Journalism Convention, the National Scholastic Press Association All-American Rating with four marks of distinction, the Columbia University Scholastic Press Association Gold Crown Award, and the National Peacemaker Award. The National Peacemaker Award is considered the highest national honor in the field. It is unofficially known as the Pulitzer Prize of student journalism. And we would like to also honor any parents that are here with these students tonight, so if you're a parent, if you can please stand up so we can recognize you two.
Okay, sleeping on the job. I'd like to call Dr. Chelsea Watson, Assistant Superintendent of Services. Who's going to present the Schools of Character, Champions of Character?
Please get that PowerPoint organized. I will go ahead and start. Good evening, President Feldman, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. Character education is the intentional effort to develop in young people core ethical performance values that are widely affirmed across all cultures. It is with great pleasure that I stand here before you today to recognize our Champions for Character and our Missouri Schools and National Schools of Character and the Parkway School District as a Missouri District and National District of Character.
Turn on.
Turn on.
Yeah, on the right side.
Minor technical difficulty. There we go. We're going to start by talking about our Champions for Character, Oakbrook Elementary and Southwest. We're celebrating both of these schools as Champions for Character, which is a recognition for schools who have service-wide learning that includes student voice, curriculum, reflection, and demonstration of learning. So first, we will begin with Southwest Middle School. Will any members from the Southwest team please join me? Southwest Middle understands that service learning must be understood by the student in a way that both global and personal and individual, coupled with the need for a community approach to learning. Southwest completed two all-service learning projects in the past two years, a community garden project and a human rights project. The community garden project was a school-wide initiative made possible by a local food pantry with a local garden center. Students designed the garden math class, learned the impact of food and the need for fresh foods in English Language Arts and Social Studies classes, and they learned about composting and soil composition in science class. Students from technical education class built garden beds, and all students took part in planting the beds funded by the garden center. The Dig a Garden Club and each advisory also played an important role. After hearing from the director of a local food pantry about the needs of their clients, students in Dr. Rivera's health classes organized a flat-fresh food drive. Students researched foods, designed the campaign, promoted the food drive, and weighed in the food. It was the first of its kind for the food pantry and was a great success with over 3,700 pounds collected. Next, I'll recognize Oakbrook Elementary School. Staff from Oakbrook and students, come on down. Be the change you want to see in the world. The staff, the parents, and students try to live this every single day in Oakbrook. They implement service learning into the curriculum throughout the year. And throughout this past full year, teachers, parents, students, community members, they did a lot to share their passion for helping to serve the community and others. This full year, many events were held. I'm just going to share a couple because there were many great things that happened in Oakbrook this year. Parents added to the annual spirit night this year by including a dump tank and food trucks to benefit Officer Flannin, a fallen police officer who was shot in the line of duty. Students who participated in Girls on the Run worked together as they learned about helping the community and making themselves stronger. They researched and completed a service project to help the family of Officer Blake Schneider, local police officer who lost his life while serving. Students participated in the Lening War and raised over $2,100 for this family. Parents and staff worked collectively in the garden club. Students, parents, and staff created a community vegetable garden. The cafeteria manager helped students harvest various types of lettuce from the indoor tower garden, and the lettuce is served in the cafeteria for all to eat during lunchtime. And during the summer, families are also able to harvest fresh produce as well. Please congratulate Oakbrook Elementary School Champions. Carmen Trails Elementary, Green Trails Elementary, Northeast Middle School, and Southwest Middle School and the Parkway School District, all recently named Missouri and National Schools of Character and the Missouri and National District of Character. This recognition indicates that these schools and the Parkway School District have demonstrated a standard of excellence and are role models for others throughout our nation. Each of the schools, as well as our district, received a visit from a Character.org National Schools of Character evaluator. Tonight, I am going to share feedback from the evaluators as each person spent a day at each school observing, talking with students and parents. The evaluator for the Parkway School District also visited numerous schools as well, and not all schools that have been designated as National Schools of Character. This evaluator also spoke with students and parents and community members. I will begin this evening with Carmen Trails Elementary School. Will the team from Carmen Trails please join me? The evaluation leaders from the Carmen Trails visit said the following. One of Carmen Trails' collective commitments is, "We will develop responsibility and mutual respect in each student." When touring throughout the Carmen Trails, you can feel the pride the students, staff, and parents, and community have for their school. As you enter the school, you are greeted not only by staff, but by also the growing leader's tree, which encompasses the school's commitment to every member making character education lead all they do. You can immediately witness students and staff carrying out their school job. So this tree is not just a poster on the wall, but it's a way of doing school at Carmen Trails Elementary. A parent, Mr. Becker, at Carmen Trails shared, "The staff isn't just a staff that does what they need to do to get by. They don't let time constrictions get in their way, and even when they aren't on contract, they do what needs to be done because they care." The evaluators asked students what they want to be when they grow up and which of the character traits they felt would help them most. Jackie, one of the students, said, "I want to be a teacher because of the character trait integrity." She said, "It's important to do the right thing when nobody's watching and to help and be kind and nice to kids." Please join me in recognizing Carmen Trails Elementary School as a Missouri and National Next, we will recognize Green Trails Elementary. All those who represent Green Trails, please join me. The evaluator said she saw an amazingly authentic, transparent day where not a single child felt stress or tension because every adult did what they naturally do, modeling respect, caring, responsibility, and above all perseverance. Now, what I did put in my notes was the kind of day Green Trails had that day, which can be a typical day in an elementary school. During visits to nearly every classroom, the evaluator said, "I saw many different lessons and grade levels, but more importantly, I saw every class grounded in their core values: mutual respect, genuine caring, responsible students, and perseverance permeated through the school. There was such an authentic feel to the building, the students and the staff. Green Trails is not about awards, they are about relationships. The strength of Green Trails lies in the fact that they live their core values. The caring and respect is clear," she said, "in the way 426 very different children behave like family." The evaluator also highlighted the relationships between students and staff and among students, the strong shared leadership and parent involvement. She spoke to a group of students while there and then formally asked them to describe the best thing about Green Trails, and the most common answer involved the power in their differences. When the students were asked why differences were important, here are the responses. Josh said, second grade, "It's easy and boring if everyone in the school is the same." Quinn, a fourth grader, said, "I like this school because kids respect kids." And a second grader said, "I love that there are people from all over the world and we go along." Another student said, "I like this school because I can share many life experiences. In my other school, I wasn't allowed to be honest about the things I have seen." Please join me in recognizing Green Trails Elementary School. Next, we will recognize Northeast Middle School. The Northeast Middle School team, please come down. Becky Sydows, the former president and CEO of Character.org, was the evaluator for Northeast Middle School. Talk about biting your nails for a little bit. My first indication that she was enjoying her visit at Northeast was that she ended up being two hours late to South High, where Dr. Schulte and I, along with some students, were waiting for her. She was scheduled to talk to students and observe sound talks. The feedback report from Northeast Middle received that they received highlighted some of the experiences she had during her visit. She talked with a parent who had children in Parkway for 12 years. She noted that the parent became emotional as she was describing how Northeast Middle has changed, sharing that one of the improvements is the feeling that, quote, "They are all worth something." The evaluator also highlighted the caring community of Northeast, noting the amazing relationships students have with, for example, the school resource officer and the students leading the work around restored practices, leading circles, and so many other activities. She also wrote about the meaningful and challenging curriculum being taught at Northeast. She noted how teachers are developing experiences that are contemporary and engaging. One of the teachers talked to the evaluator and said, "I love this school. It's home for a lot of students. It's home for me." The evaluator wrote about her conversation with an eighth grader, who happened to be Jada and one of her student friends. Jada gave her an assessment of the school that matches her observations, and it seemed fitting to write in the report. The evaluator wrote, "Jada said there are three things that make the school great. One, character. It doesn't matter how smart you are if you're not a good person. Two, learning. Learning beyond books, learning from your mistakes. We may not have the top test scores, but we have the best learners. We learn from our mistakes, we learn about other cultures in the world and things we are concerned about. We can have uncomfortable conversations. And three, taking risks. This school really teaches you to speak up and use your voice." Please join me in congratulating Northeast Middle. Our next school is Southwest Middle School. Will the team join me again? The evaluator began her feedback by writing, "Southwest Middle is a big school, and its modest spaciousness struck me right away as I entered the building." A parent who recently moved to the district from Kansas City shared with her, "Walking in, the wow of the schoolyard and the way they incorporate the outside and inside is very noticeable, especially if you come from a box school." But the evaluator continued, saying, "As I walked through the halls and talked to students and staff, I quickly realized that Southwest is so much more than a pretty place. The sense of caring and respect is everywhere." An eighth grader shared with the evaluator, "We live by our core values. Respect is the most important one, but I never go a day without compassion. I truly felt a sense of ethical learning," said the evaluator. She said, "Community. The community is committed to character education everywhere I went in the school, no matter who I talked to." She noted that the school's theme this year was unlocking her potential. She said that she believes that that contributed to students focused on persistence because students talked about being on their path to the future. She said, "I saw engaged learning in every classroom I visited. The strong work ethic is not just evident with the students, but with the teachers too." Please join me in recognizing Southwest Middle School as a Missouri school and a national school. school. Next, we will recognize the Parkway School District as a Missouri district and national district of character. In the evaluator's first paragraph of her feedback, she wrote, "When I was assigned to evaluate the Parkway School District, I first made a call to Dr. Martin Berkowitz. Since he teaches LACE, the Leadership Academy for Character Education in St. Louis, he knows the schools in that area very well. He told me, 'You'll like Parkway. They are doing many good things,' and I found that to be very true." Our evaluator noted the many academic accolades, Blue Ribbon Schools, U.S. News and World Report. But she wrote, "While these recognitions are notable, having five national schools of character out of 28 is only about 20% of the district. How should I determine if the district itself is worthy of the honor?" "National District of Character," she wrote. Our evaluator wrote about Parkway's engagement process and seeking input and feedback as we began the strategic process of talking about character education in 2012 to our most recent listening tours. It was noted that our work around restored practices and the many school diversity cultural events plays a key role in helping Parkway students become better citizens. During the visit, she spoke with Luke, a student at South High, and she was intrigued at South Talks and the open spaces that students had to discuss diversity and contemporary issues. She also highlighted a few parent comments. One parent, who happens to now be on our school board, Mr. Todd, she cited that he is a Parkway alum and PTO president at West High, and said his kids have attended several different Parkway schools, and he commented on how well the school makes kids aware of the world around them. Many of the teachers who also coached spend from 6:30 to 7:15 several days a week working on building character traits. Teachers truly care about preparing students for life, said Mr. Todd. He also commented on the district and its constant striving to improve. He praised the professional development efforts and stated they give teachers tools beyond books. Another parent, Miss Bybee, said, "Character is embedded in the multi-grade level families and integrated through kindness like confetti. Just last week, we received two texts on the kindness that my kids have done, and in the place for character on the report cards, it shows that they really know my kids." Now, if you remember earlier, I said the evaluator had some wonderings about Parkway based on having just a handful of national schools of character. In conclusion, our evaluator noted, "And I discovered that although only five schools have been named national schools of character to date, more will probably receive the designation this year, and many more are on their character journeys. So it seems like that Character.org will continue to accredit more schools from Parkway down the road." She further stated, "Based on her review of our website, the application, the school visits, that she could feel Parkway is devoted to developing students in both academics and character development." So who do we want to recognize here? I have to recognize first and foremost, I was going to say, Dr. Erin Schulty, our coordinator. She joined this team in this role five years ago and has put her heart and soul into working and helping us continue to develop the character of our students. She also led the writing team as part of the Character Education Action Team in writing this application. If we have other members of the Character Ed Action Team, would you please join Erin here at the podium?
Dr. Watson's work as well in serving has been monumental.
Well, thank you. So, okay, go ahead, sorry. So I'd like to make one more acknowledgement. We have some students from Oak Brook who arrived to be recognized for their work around sharing. So students, please come and shake the hands of the board members to be recognized for your great work. Let's give these students another round of applause for their performance. So as I go back to our recognition as a district of character, you, each and every one of you in this room, need to be acknowledged for your work. It's you, Dr. Marty, it's you, board members, it's you, parents and students and administrators and teachers and counselors. It's you that makes this district a national district of character. So turn to your partner and give your partner or your shoulder partner a high five and say, "Great job! So let's continue developing whole child, meeting their academic, social, and emotional needs, and we will continue doing what's right for our community and for our country.
Before we move on to the last award of the night, I want to say, Dr. Watson, I know you don't do what you do for recognition, but I'd just like to take a moment to recognize your efforts since you became Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The enormous growth of the work in character education in Parkway could not have been possible without your efforts. And now, Dr. Keith Marty.
First of all, congratulations, everyone. Thanks for hanging in there. We just have one more recognition, and I would like Paul Candy and the communications folks to join me, including Amy Story. Please, all of you come down here. This is Kathy Kelly, Amy Story, Annie Dickerson, and Paul Candy, as they're coming. Let me share with you that they were a little reluctant about being recognized, but really the award that they are being recognized for is a bit like the Oscar or the Emmy in another field. This is an amazing award. For more than 45 years, the Bronze Anvil Awards have celebrated the best of the best in public relations tactics, not just in public education, but more broadly. The individual items or components that contribute to the success of overall program or campaigns. These tactics, whether in the media relations program, website, annual report, podcast, blog, or other use of social media, are the hardworking parts of any successful public relations program. Parkway's Communications Department recently received the 2017 Bronze Anvil Award of Commendation for the Hope Chalkboard. Do you remember that? The Hope Chalkboard. How many of you saw the Hope Chalkboard? If you haven't, it's still out there, right? For people to see, this was a start of the year with students and staff at Southwest Middle School. This year's competition for this Anvil Award drew a total of 564 entries. Of those, only 94 organizations were selected for the Bronze Anvil, judges as the Bronze Anvil Award of Commendation winners. This demonstrates the high standard supplied to judges and their evaluation progress. Now, why this is so rare and why we need to celebrate it is that the competition, the people or other entities that won this award listen to these organizations or entities. The University of Michigan, Bank of America, Home People, Wrangler, Allstate Insurance, and Hilton, and a few, are among the people who also received this award, and I think they have a lot more money to put into campaigns in the Parkway School District. So we are very, very proud of our communications department. We know here in Parkway, those of us who work with this department, their wonderful expertise, their wonderful innovation and work that they do. We're missing actually a very important piece of this, and I had Derek Duncan, who's been an amazing addition as well, and also James Skorber, who just joined the group. Am I missing anyone besides the four folks here? So we have nothing to give them, we don't have the Anvil to give them yet, but please join me in recognizing our communications department.
We have an amazing group of students, teachers, administrators, parents, counselors, and everybody else who works to make Parkway District work. Let's give everybody a round of applause. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and we're going to take a break for just a few minutes to give those of you that need to leave an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Still waiting so much to sound.
I'm done.
There should be a picture right now.
Put your badges there.
No, they look cool.
They last, if they're random, they last like...
This turns for some reason, but...
Yeah, I took out that earlier.
It's like, and see, once it stops, it's like...
It's barely, it's like...
Somebody twisted it really heavy, it looks like it's twisted it more like...
Well, it wasn't, this is coming off first.
Yeah, because somebody really twisted it.
Every day I watch one, but I've got to be...
He's new, but it's like, bro, you're getting here.
Yeah, you should be getting something.
You're shooting a hard, probably be more...
And it turned, it's like...
It used to be a...
It's all this, bro, it's...
I'm like, "God!" I'm like, "Come on!"
What did we get, Alex?
It's all right, I can get, I can get shirt.
Sorry.
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 Like I said, every time I call, I teach, I call, you guys, you know, you guys, like, I message you, okay, there you go. Exactly. That's like, that's the only way I reach out to you guys.
Here, I think it's all one time.
It's like, Gary.
Alright, yeah.
So, I mean, how are you?
I'm back, congratulations.
Hey, Graham, how are you? Sorry. How are you?
When you put your talents up, it follows schools, like, high level.
Yeah, and I was like, I was like, "This is..."
Because I usually, I just shoot as well. That's interesting. You guys can talk before me.
Yeah, but like, you know, like, it's...
Oh, yeah, we have to move on. Well, there's been like, five, six, seven, which is very interesting. Um, excuse me.
Sure.
So, he was like, what, down there?
Yeah, so you guys knew it was going to be that small one? Not like, people called.
Yeah, it was, it was. I think it was February March, yeah, like, in March. What's her name? So, it was a different book? What's her name left? So, it seems good then?
Yeah.
You're right, yep. Been making a trip to the East Coast for a while. People will back these people.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's new for me to watch.
The new protocol, everything.
You're transitioning to a new role. We'll be voting for that probably.
That's my nation, yes.
I can say I knew you both went, so... It's good to see you, Chelsea.
Have a great summer.
And have a good summer, well, alright to see you.
I need two hands, I can't do it.
Yeah, those aren't one hand, right?
Oh, oops.
You're still live, right?
So?
Two.
Two? We had three at one point.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Alright, sorry for the delay in reconvening, but we are going to reconvene now. So, we're at 6.0, additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addition to agenda item 11.08, approval of personnel items. 6.02, correction to agenda item 12.01, approval of the 2017-2018 budget. And 6.03, modification of agenda item 11.11, approval of service agreement with benefits broker JW. 7.0, there are no assistance statements tonight. 8.0, approval of agenda. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular reading of the Board of Education scheduled for June 14, 2017. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. 9.0 resolutions, we have none tonight. 10.0 communications. 10.01, would like to call down, Dr. Chelsea Watson to introduce the new administrator. Thank you.
Good evening again. I am pleased this evening to introduce Dr. Jennifer Sebold, the interim principal of Northeast Middle School this evening. Dr. Sebold is currently the assistant principal at Parkway West High School, and has served in that role since 2013. Prior to her current role at West High, she was with the Rockwood School District as an associate principal at Marquette High School, and an assistant principal at Rockwood Summit High School. Prior to that, she was the chair of the English Department at McLaurin North High School. In her current role, Dr. Sebold has been leading intervention work, and made positive changes in the weekly progress monitoring process at West High. As part of this work, she has facilitated the streamlining of the care team process, allowing a lens of equity to be used when making decisions. She's also led work with staff and students, as West High helps students and others understand the views, values, and cultures of others. Feedback from Dr. Sebold's interview. Where's Paul? She is confident and has personality. Her depth with data is strong. She has a passion and belief that all teachers can grow and all students can learn, given a positive and caring environment. Dr. Sebold has a sense of the work that has occurred at Northeast Middle School, and will honor plans in place and take that building to the next level. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Sebold to her new role. I first just want to say thank you to, on behalf of to Dr. Jeremy Mitchell, and to the West Area community, for challenging me and supporting me to grow into this new role, which I'm very excited to take on. I'm also grateful to Dr. Marty, Dr. Watson, and the Board of Education for believing in me and supporting me into this new position as well. And finally, to the Northeast Middle School community, I am so, so impressed with the work that's been going on. Congratulations on everything you've all accomplished to this point, and I look forward to supporting that work and learning and growing alongside them. So, thank you very much.
10.02 calendar meetings, the next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2017, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in Central Middle. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 a.m. 10.03 board days on reports, we start at the end and work our way forward. This is number?
Well, you do think that, particularly, I'll talk about what in particular for me, I attended, we're working on over the summer with our personalized learning initiative, and there are summer work groups that are taking place, and I attended, my work group is titled Guiding Principles, and my work group, team members are Michael Bearlap, Bill Coats, and Bill Bax, and we had a very nice conversation on Friday, talking about where guiding principles, just talking about the big picture, what we think guiding principles are and are not, what we think the district wants the guiding principles to be here or to not to be. So, we just had a lovely conversation about that, and we're going to be doing more work and communication online through Google Docs to develop our concept of what we think a guiding principles presentation will be in August to a larger group, when we can convene in August on personalized learning initiative. A number of us also attended the Garderoy Tree, beginning of June, and we have to just say thank you to all of the superintendent section team and Dr. Marty for putting that together. It's always nice for all of us to be able to come together to talk about more in-depth discussions within the school district. So, we spent a day and a half doing that, and it was very well received, I think, and very positive for our district to do that. And then, that Sunday evening, Dr. Marty hosted a dinner that several of us attended with Patty Bill, school board members, and two keynote speakers. Maybe Dr. Martin, Fred Ramon?
Fred Ramonte.
Ramonte.
Former, former member of the state board in New Hampshire, and Ray McGolby, who's a dean of college education at Southern Hampshire University.
So, that was a very exciting, talking about design challenges with school districts, and we got into personalized learning a little bit, and talking about the design of schools, and it was just really, I can't begin to tell you how charged up I got after that dinner. So, I really thank you very much for you and the superintendent of Patty Bill bringing that together with us.
I will just comment on, I got to go on to the summer school tours yesterday, and one particular class at Valerie Elementary, it was an elementary class on building your own business, and it was teams of kids that were putting together little businesses, and they're going to pitch them and have a competition, and there was a lot of glitter, but my favorite part was that out of, I think, 24 total students, there were 22 girls, which I thought was really cool for a natural membership, like, business class, so, I thought that was cool.
I had the opportunity to attend the Barrett Elementary First Responders Honor Ed Ceremony, and what impressed me the most about it was it was entirely student-run. Teachers, staff, they really played no role in executing that event. It was student emcee, it was student speakers, and it was a really neat way to honor the first responders that are there at the Barrett's community. Also, just in the last month, obviously, been able to attend a number of Parkway graduations, but I've also attended probably even more personal graduations. It's been interesting for me to sit through those now as a board member with that particular lens and see how we compare to high schools conducting a graduation ceremony, and as we compare to other schools here in the St. Louis area and around the country. And it's just, it's fascinating to see how we're very different, and we're very the same all at the same time, but in the end, we're preparing our kids in very unique ways, and it shows, so...
Speaking of graduations, after nine years of being on the school board, I finally made it to my last school, which was North High. I'd never been to a North High graduation, because we had several board members who were from that part of the district, and they knew so many of the kids, so they always attended, and now that they're not on the board anymore, it's my turn, and I have to say how much I enjoy seeing the personality of North High, and seeing the personality of all the schools individually come out in their graduations, even though they're in the same place, they basically have the same format, you can really get a feel for each school's personality as you sit there during the ceremony, so that was really fun. And then, yesterday, I had a wonderful opportunity to attend the Central Office Annual Picnic, which was a really great picnic, because it took place indoors on a day that was like 95 degrees. But it's always fun to get together with the Central Office staff and recognize some service awards, and the longest-serving employee in that building is Tasha, who's been with Parkway for 25 years, and we went all the way down to somebody who'd been there for five years, and there were a couple of 20-year awardees, so that's really exciting. It's really, really amazing how many people at Parkway devote their entire career to our district, so, that was fun.
Can I just add a couple of things? First of all, I just want to say the board has been extremely busy. Did we mention the retreat, and especially Sunday night dinner, and graduations, and so, thank you, board. You're going to get a little time off now, we hope, through the summer, but thanks for all your service and attending activities. Kristi and Jeff, briefly, we toured summer school Tuesday, as Kristi mentioned, and I just want to announce that between a regular summer school and then special programs academies, Lisa, is that what we call them, academies? The Jennifer Stanfels organized, we have about 9,000 students that will be enrolled in summer school, between the regular, I think, about 6,400 kids, and then about another 1,700 in the academies throughout the summer, extending beyond regular summer school time. So, that's really a tribute to our students and our staff dedicated to that, so we're very proud of the number of students who are taking advantage of the extended learning time, and Jennifer Stanfels is the first summer leading our summer efforts, and it's Jennifer, isn't it? I don't think so. Probably rested enough, because she's a busy, busy fellow, so, thank you, Mrs. Stanfels.
Okay, thank you. 10.04 board subcommittee reports, there are none. At 10.05 upcoming subcommittee meetings, as Dr. Marty said, we have a little time off, so, none, but I do want to say that Mr. Times-Davis have been very busy attending their board orientation meetings. We just came from one, and we had 4:30 this evening, and we had another one last week. And even as someone who spent a long time learning from you all, I learn something new every day, which really makes it fun to be on the school board. So, thank you all for sharing what you do every day with board members, we appreciate it. 11.0 action items, we have 68. So, I'm going to start reading now, I'm just kidding. Alright, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's presented in the June 14, 2017 board materials? Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed? Great, then we can vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries 5-0. Sorry. Action items, 12.01, approval of the 2017-2018 budget. Patty Bedborough, CFO, please come on down, please, somebody's got a question. Good evening, everyone. So, that was quite a packet for you all to go through. Of course, we did have a summary of everything that's included in the packet in our April board meeting, but certainly if you have any questions at this time, Eric, you may have your questions.
First of all, a lot of us have prepared in the midst of this meeting and reviewing the budget by the one, and I just want to thank you for addressing all of the questions that I had in advance to try to save the evening's time, and make it more efficient coordinating that we ask questions ahead of time, and so, I had a number of questions about very specific things within the budget, and I just want to thank you very much for addressing all of those.
Oh, you are so welcome. I did not do that alone.
I understand.
Our Director of Finance, Brian Whittle, also helped with some of those responses, so, you were working on them, that is what we are here for.
The one, the one, when I pulled myself away from the weeds, if you will, and took a bigger picture of this, it looks like this upcoming year, and I, pardon me if I don't exactly know what page it's on, but I noticed that this is the 20, the upcoming year, 2017 and '18, is the largest loss that we're going to see in like, the past seven years, and the next upcoming years is budgeted for a loss, but it looks like we're going to be able to recuperate, okay?
For a loss? The only fund that has a loss is the Capital Projects Fund, and that is directly related to the spend-down of the bond funds. The operating fund has grown, and so does the debt service fund. So, when you're looking at the total funds and the recapitulation, you do see that the revenues, the total revenues are less than the total expenditures, but that's because we do have capital spending projected for the summer, not only this summer, but then the summer of 2018 as well, for the finishing of the bond projects. So, in that fund alone, we have 22 million of a, yeah, 22,583 of a net spend-down in there. So, remember, we sell the bonds, once the bond issue is passed by our motors, then you have authorization to sell the bonds, and at that point in time, we recognize the revenue, and that stays in the capital fund balance until those funds are spent out.
Okay, alright, thank you. You may, it's on page 24, but I was looking at...
And on page 23, so, the normal Capital Projects Fund also shows a loss, so, we are purchasing, for the first time in a few years, buses, so we're replenishing some of our existing fleet, we're buying 10 new CNG buses, and replacing 10 of our diesel fuel buses, but you'll see that that fund is also being infused with a $1.7 million transfer from our operating funds. I think at one point in time, the district lobbied some of our local revenue into the Capital Projects Fund, and that ceased probably in like, 2010 or so, in order to help with some of our budget cuts, and put as much lobby as we could into our operating funds. So, any other questions? Anything?
I would just congratulate Patty and her department for their work. It used to be that there was kind of a three or four-month budget season, but now really, Patty's already thinking about next, the 18, 19 budget, right? But it's an ongoing process, so this is really, you know, this is kind of a celebration and approval of this budget, but we're already thinking ahead, and obviously, you see Patty has projected, you know, out three to five years, and trying to do, and stay as focused as we can on what the movie targets are. Thanks, Patty.
You're welcome. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2017-2018 expenditure budget, as presented by the administration, in the amount of $276,567,161, with $84,295,000, I'm sorry, $84,295,409 to be expended for the general fund, $148,765,010 from the special revenue fund, and $25,643,042 from the Capital Projects Fund, and $17,863,700 from the debt service fund. Welcome, please.
Ms. Davis? Mrs. Hopper? Mr. Todd? Mrs. Wilman?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries 5-0. 12.02, approval of curriculum revisions. Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching Learning Accountability, please come on down, and just for our audience, or anybody who's watching at home, can you just give a brief one or two-minute explanation as to why we're doing these changes, these revisions? Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk again about curriculum revisions that we are embarking on within the district. So, as we have gone through the process of revising, or looking at our curriculum in our core areas, so, English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, it has been a condensed process over the last couple of years because of a Missouri state statute that came out of House Bill 1490, and I do not remember the statute number, which, with that state statute, Missouri learning standards were changed. We had prior, prior to the change, Missouri had adopted the Common Core State Standards, and as a part of this state statute, there were teacher teams from across the state that rewrote the Missouri learning standards in those four content areas. We have a gradual rollout of when they will impact state achievement tests, so, the Math test and the EOC test in the state of Missouri test the content that is in the Missouri learning standards, and so, we need to adjust our curriculum to ensure that we are aligned with those before the new state assessments, or before the assessments change. The first assessments to change are ELA and Math, and so, that's why last, at the last board meeting, you looked at the ELA curriculum, and for this board meeting, you're looking at the Math curriculum. Our coordinators also took this as an opportunity to, once again, look at our curriculum to ensure and to sure our places where we might not be aligned as tightly with our vision statements that we would like to be, or our embedding of our learning principles, for example, lessons in Stage 3 that come after you approve the curriculum framework. It's also been an opportunity to look at alignment to our character education standards. So, a state statute nudged us to do this, but we've taken the opportunity to do even more work beyond that, and our three STEM coordinators have worked together to ensure that the Math curriculum is a K-12 tightly...
is a K-12 tightly aligned curriculum that's aligned to our new state standards and along with our character education standards and to ensure that they're working towards our vision statements. I'm sure they can answer any specific questions about the MAP curriculum.
Again, I submitted some questions ahead of time, and thank you very much for addressing those. I did a great job. So I really appreciate having that information ahead of time.
So may I have a motion in second that the Board of Education approves of curriculum revisions for K-12 mathematics as presented in the June fourteen, two thousand seventeen board meeting materials? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five zero. Twelve point zero, approval of Modern Classical Languages Level One MAP curriculum. Amy Belding, Modern and Classical Languages Curriculum Coordinator, come on down. Last but not least. Does anybody have any, any questions for Ms. Belding?
I just have a couple slides.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Amy Belding, and I coordinate Modern Classical Languages. This is my first year coordinating MCL. I previously coordinated Career Tech Ed, which I still do on my choice program. So today I'm here to talk with you a little bit about that. So I guess I want to start by saying, with technology, our students really have more an opportunity to connect with students, not only here in our local community, but globally. And I think that because of that, they are really deeply entrenched with this idea of interculturality, even more so than we were when we were studying as students. And so, you know, we ask the question as educators who are preparing students to respond to an ever-changing world, how do we do that? And so one of the avenues that we do that is by encouraging and fostering students learning a language. And so thinking about why we learn a language or how we learn a language has really actually shifted quite a bit. And so although we're offering different languages here in Parkway, we're shifting from more of a content-based model to a competency-based model, which is focused on speaking. And the reason why is probably because when you all were learning a language, it might have looked something like this, and it was about conjugating verbs, worksheets and vocabulary. And a generation of research around neuroscience has shown that we have a large gap of people in the United States that took anywhere from two to five years of language and are not in fact fluent in that. And so that research has really propelled the people in the world, language world, to do research around what are best practices of learning a language. And what they found is that it is around communication. And so our MCL teachers last summer began the journey to rewrite our curriculum specifically in Level One around a content and competency-based model that fosters that transfer of speaking that skill. So part of the reason of the why that we do that as well is because students and adults as well are learning technology on, or learning languages through technology. Babbel or Zetastone, Duolingo, or just a few companies that offer online language learning. Duolingo has grown to a hundred and seventy million users in the past five years. So we know that technology has to be a part of what we're doing and that content can't solely live in textbooks for our students that are learning those languages. So our teachers, again, have really engaged in this deep work around what does it look like to actually speak a language? How do we encourage our teachers to speak ninety percent in the target language, even in our seventh grade classes? And how does that kind of trickle up? And I just have a short video from ACTL. ACTL is our national association that has really done a ton of research around learning a language. It's a four minutes. We're going to show maybe two and a half, so if you go ahead and do that as a video.
Learning languages prepares us to connect in the multilingual and multicultural world we share. ACTL and sixty other language organizations collaborated to create-
Pause for station identification.
Right now? Yeah.
Any questions? I'll review that.
We focus at high school here.
Six through twelve. So we teach language beginning in sixth grade through our Future Papas course, and that is really just an exposure model. And then in seventh grade, students can take Spanish, French, German, Latin, what am I missing? American Sign Language at some of our schools, they take it in seventh and eighth grade, then they can get a high school credit.
Are they originally very familiar with English?
Yeah, after that, yeah. The people standing behind you, yeah, we've talked about that, these two. Certainly, that's something that I know Dr. Amol and I have spoken about because, again, as you probably know as an early childhood parent, that's something that we know that students are really able to kind of sponge that up. So that is something we've talked about, or Regina, yeah, we've talked to. So, yes. You know, it's okay. I can just kind of break all of the videos because I don't want to waste anybody's time on this evening. So essentially, what the video is talking about is the modes of communication that we're using for languages are interpersonal, presentational and interpretive modes. And so we're focusing on those modes of communications for our students to actually speak the language, as opposed to just memorize a vocabulary and then using it in a setting that wouldn't really be natural. So the competency around language is I can communicate effectively with students and family members and my community, and I seek opportunities to do so. And so that's part of this global studies, global competency that we're really trying to move forward in Parkway. And it has also been something that came out of our listening tours, two years, last year, the Dr. Marty and Dr. Chukwala, so, I mean, again, that's something that we're going to work on my tour. We can just go ahead and skip to the next slide if something else. Thank you. So just something that we said along with that. So this year, the teachers worked cross-language, so that is also best practice, and that's something that we shifted from a single language team to a cross-language team. And so as we add on Mandarin next year, virtually in Parkway, we're very excited about that. We're also looking to expand ASL potentially to our high schools and really looking at what a blended learning model for acquiring a language looks like, and is it possible? So one of the things that I'm actually going to be doing this year to help try to figure that out is I'm going to be auditing Mandarin as a coordinator to try to figure out if I can learn it too and what are the ins and outs of that, because I think that that would be good for our teachers to know. And just a couple of highlights about the Level One curriculum. Again, best practice indicates authentic material. So for when we had a textbook that was not authentic, it was written by not necessarily an authentic text around, for instance, like an infographic that's actually from Spain or from Tunisia for French or from, you know, another country. So we're using authentic materials. We're looking at ninety percent in the target language. And then also the idea of fewer topics, so less content, but deeper into those topics again, because that's around the communication. And this has been really a concerted effort. If you get to bump into a language teacher, please tell them thank you so much for their hard work. This has been a shift in their thinking, and it really was a grassroots organization from inside the teachers that they really wanted to do this. And the results that we're seeing for our students in competency for speaking the language has increased, and we're going to be testing that next year as well with speaking Mandarin assessment. So I just want to thank you all for your support. Thank you, Dr. Marty and Dr. Meredith. This year, as we went through the transition, I really appreciate it. It's been, it's been a great experience and we're, we are now writing Level Two next year and Level Three thematically, and we'll continue that. So, another question.
Can we even be rolled out at all at the schools or just certain ones?
So, good question. We are offering Mandarin one virtually, so students from all of the five high schools are able to enroll in that. And I'll be bringing Mandarin two to virtual course proposal this upcoming fall so that those students have another pathway to go into. And I think the hope is, you know, depending on student enrollment and what the interest is for students, that we would investigate looking at that face-to-face, depending on what the enrollment is of students.
Do students take more than one language?
Absolutely. So I was in Italy with our Latin teachers over spring break, and one of the students that I met who was sitting next to me on the bus, who was chatting, he just finished German four, and next year he's taking German five. And so we do have some linguists. We also have some students that study at the Missouri Tamil School that are in our community, and they are fluent in their language as a part of their culture. They're also fluent in English, and then they're taking other language here in Parkway. So trilingualism is something that is coming as well.
One more question.
Sure.
What's in demand right now?
So nationwide, language is actually on, language learning is on the decrease, and the research behind that is because people can learn Duolingo fifteen minutes at night when they go to bed, you know, et cetera. So in terms of languages, Spanish has remained steady, has slightly increased. Mandarin is increasing. Arabic, French, German and Latin are on the decline. We see that in French and German in our high schools. However, Latin has actually increased, and I think that's, I would make the assumption to say that that's because we have a community that supports that for pre-professional degrees, and we have students that are interested in taking that, so we continue after this.
Are you still seeing the requirement from a lot of colleges and universities to have two years of language or to graduate to go on to college or university?
So I think one thing that I've seen in working with CTE and MCL is that some colleges are actually accepting computer science as the language because some states, actually fourteen states in the United States offer computer science as a language for their high school graduation. Missouri's not one of those. So I think that some universities are still looking for that two years of language. However, in talking with Aaron Schulte about a month ago, if students take, let's say, seventh and eighth grade, and then they go and take, and they didn't take it for the high school credit, but they take the Level Two, the council still acknowledge and recognize that they in fact did have the two years of the language, even though it wasn't transcripted in the middle school. If that makes sense. So if they don't think that they're ready to take the high school credit in seventh and eighth grade, then they can still get honored if they passed it with their, you know, on their final.
So just one more question.
Sure.
Computer language.
Yeah.
Are we planning to have some kind of even a basic SQL, you know, SQL, the structured query language for computer loads? Just, just wondering.
So are we, the question is, are we looking at SQL? So one of the things that we did last week with the design challenge, or they think that Ms. Hopper mentioned, is we brought together a team that involved our STEM coordinators. So Stacey Valley, Jimmy Prophet, Jason Brooks, Bill, Jennifer Stanfield, and we are looking at how we can continue to expand computer science offerings. One thing I will note is that, not this year, but the year before, I ran a computer science advisory in our community, and one industry told us, twenty representatives, that it doesn't matter what language they know, we can teach them how to do any language, Ruby, JavaScript, you know, iOS with whatever it is, they have to be problem solvers, they have to be critical thinkers, they have to have those skills. And if you can teach them that. So part of our design challenge last week that we met about was how do we continue to offer students choice in learning of computer science? And if it is that language, what do we need to do to provide potentially a workshop model for the teachers who have been in their classes? We are piloting a class next year at South High called Computer Science App Design and Development, and that course is rated competency-based, so that if there was a student that was interested in that, we could support that learning.
Thanks.
Sure. Other questions?
I have a question. Major Collins. You're in high school. He wrote Spanish, all three at the same time, which is a challenge. But what I want to tell you is when my son was in seventh grade and he had the choice of French, German or Spanish, he was a smart kid. He chose French because he thought, oh, I've got homework homework. Well, we sat down together one time, and when I realized that he had not been taught to pronounce a word, not one single word, I couldn't sit down with him anymore. I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't take it. So I applaud what we're doing in, in the spoken language, because I guarantee you that our children are not going to grow up to go read something somewhere. They're going to grow up to go speak to somebody, and that's really what they need to learn. So.
Yeah, if they're naturally curious, they want to go broad and do that, and I think you're totally right. So thank you for your support. Again, I do really appreciate it. We have some awesome teachers that are leading the work, so.
Thank you.
I would like to look back to Christie's question.
Oh, sure.
About the elementary. And I mean, I think most of us would love to see that, but it's a matter of time. I mean, we have so much to try to do, you know, every day, but the approach you're taking right now could transfer in some fashion to be embedded or integrated, correct?
Yes, I would agree with that. Dr. Marty's absolutely right.
But it's, we want to do it in equality here and to be, you know, be consistent with what Amy's talking about, that it's really developing language in the right sort of way, not sometimes when a language is often, it's around numbers and colors.
Yeah.
And so we really want to do it so it's, it's got more of an approach that will be similar to what you're establishing.
Absolutely. Yes, you're exactly right.
I'm not the expert.
No, you, you are, you've listened to a lot of things I told you about, so I appreciate that. All right?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in second that the Board of Education approves of revised curriculum framework unit overview since stage one for French, German and Spanish of the Modern Classical Language Curriculum for implementation in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five zero. Thirteen point zero, there's a policy review tonight, and fourteen point zero, fourteen point zero one, library media program evaluation. Go fast, come on down.
Good evening, President Belding, Dr. Marty, members of the board, and Mrs. Hopper. I am really excited to meet you tonight and to share with you our findings of the library media program evaluation. We've been working on this for almost a year now, and we, it's been very insightful, it's been very revealing, and the reflective nature of program evaluation has really given me a lot to think about and really helped, I think, direct the library program as we go forward. Before we get started, I have to turn this on. Before we get started, I want to just say thank you to the members of the board, Dr. Marty, Dr. Meredith, Dr. Tyson, for guiding me through this, all the members of Teaching, Learning and Accountability Team, as well as Kim Lynn's vote. Without your support, I would not have been able to essentially make it up here to, before you tonight. Additionally, I want to thank the library committee. We had eight librarians who gave up their time to come together and really think and analyze and look at data, as well as design what we, where we want to go in the future. And so tonight, I want to start with a mission statement. And the mission statement in the library program really resonates with us because of the four Cs and that last piece about understanding and responding to challenges of an ever-changing world. As we go through tonight, I think that you're going to hear a lot of the broad scope and the broad influence that the library program has on our schools and in our buildings. And as we think about the future, that ever-changing world continues to challenge us and continues to give us opportunities to really make Parkway and the schools in Parkway a magical place for kids as they work through and solve problems and ask problems, as well as go back and learn those literacy skills that are so important for them going forward. So as you think about the librarians that you have encountered over your time, what I would encourage you to think about is the way that librarians are looked at across, around the world. This is actually a, an advertisement from a European automaker saying that this car is not suitable for librarians. So I'm not sure exactly what is not suitable. I don't know if it's a powerful engine. I don't know if it's the look. I don't, it might be a sports car, I'm not really sure. But this was, there's a, there's a kind of stigma, and that has a lot to do with the background of, and maybe the experiences that you had in libraries in your past. There is actually a librarian named Nancy Pearl who has her own librarian action figure. And I know it's not really easy to see, but on that, on that sheet, she has amazing push-button shushing action. And so as you think about the library program, this is actually a real person. Nancy Pearl lives in Portland, Oregon, and she has fully embraced her shushing action in an action figure. And this was given to me right after I took this position, and it kind of resonates with me because it, it indicates for me the things that we're not looking for in libraries. We're not looking for librarians who are going to shush kids. We want them to be active, we want them to explore, but we also want them to be able to understand how to use information and find information. So one of the questions that we always ask the librarians is what does it mean to be a librarian in digital age? We are fully into that 21st century. Twenty seventeen is not a time where we can look back and shush kids around them trying to explore and figure out how to use the information. And this is that essential question that we consistently go back to. In fact, we have, a few years ago, we created a, established a vision statement for our library program. And as you look at this, there are a number of elements in there that are going to tie back into our mission statement, as well as, as you listen through the rest of the night, you know, I think you're going to hear a lot of these things come up over time. So first of all, they're engaging with students, they're making sense of ideas and information, using the library curriculum to respond to the needs of our community, providing opportunities for exploration, learning and creation, all while fostering level reading. Now, that's a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of stuff that librarians are asked to do every day, and all of those pieces really combine to come to the library program. And as we think about- And as we think about what has happened, in 2009, we came back, that was the last time we did a program evaluation of our library program. And so in 2009, I want to give you some highlights of the things that have happened since then. We've established and maintained a library curriculum where before there was none. We've established a library program at Fern Ridge, it was not a library program, a former Fern Ridge five years ago. That has, we now have a library and a library program going on there. We have adopted a modern library catalog to give kids access to resources and digital age content. We have partnered with the county library to provide library cards for all Parkway students, again, to give them access to information and really be able to experience that information in different ways. We've been highlighting the National EdTech Plan, and we have established a nationally recognized mobile makerspace program. Each one of these things offer different components to that library program. And so since 2009, these are some of the highlights that we've done. Now, as I talk tonight, there are three elements of the library program that I really want you to kind of be thinking about, have in your mind. First of all is the place, and the place is simply the space of the library program in our schools. The second one is programming, and this is what happens in those library programs. This is what we ask kids to do, and this is the opportunities that we give them to experience content in various ways. And finally is the professional, and the professional is the librarian who designs those programs in order to take place in that space. And all three of those together really give us a sense of what a library program is going to look like. So in January, I came before you and I talked about the five things that we wanted to study. That being the role of the librarian, digital strategies for content, student choice and personalization, where librarians fit in there, as well as the flexible program to meet kids' needs in our libraries, and literacy advocacy for all the types of literacy that are so important now, from information and meeting. Do those, do those, wow. Do those literacy advocacy things, really, as, as you think about what goes on in schools and the things that they need, literacy is one of those key components that goes along with it. Now, to do this, we, we collected data and collected information in four basic different ways. So the first one is the Parkway District Survey, and that survey went out to teachers, administrators, students, and parents. The second one was an external library data collection, where we actually asked, using some of our external partners and networks that we are a part of, we asked people from all over the country and all over the world, what trends are in modern library programs, and really try to get a sense of where we need to go in Parkway, as well as what we believe is important for kids inside of our own environment. Additionally, we had student focus groups, and if each heartache school is from our library committee, we held focus groups and asked kids what they want from the library program. Now, if you ask in elementary, do you, you have to be prepared for things like water slides in libraries? That would really help, if you want to come to the library more often, because of water slide, ice cream, would be another piece? Wow, that doesn't usually need to happen. And then finally, the last one was a Parkway open forum, where we really asked for community involvement and asked them what they're looking for from a library program. So all four of these pieces came together, we collected massive amounts of data. And so in that massive amount of data, one of the pieces that we really had to focus on is, where are those external partners, and how can we leverage them to really determine where we're going to go? So the Alliance for Excellent Education, the Department of Education, ISTI, which stands for the International Society of Technology in Education, the American Association of School Librarians, FALAT, and St. Louis County Library, were all thinking partners with us as we went forward and really began to work through that question of what it means to be a librarian in the digital age. Additionally, when I was here in January, I also talked to you about these two frameworks, the Future Ready Libraries Framework and the Project Net Framework. Each one of those gives us guidance and gives us a direction in terms of what library programs are going to look like in the future. Obviously, it's predictive, but it really gives us topics to think around and really help, help with our process throughout this effort. So, I ask again, what does it mean to be a librarian in the digital age? It is constantly changing, it is a moving target, and we are not looking for a destination, we're looking for the journey. We're trying, we fully recognize through libraries that we always have to be on top of it, because technology is always changing, information is always changing, and the way we access that information is consistently changing regardless of where we are. Tonight, I want to share with you ten key findings that we found. I'm going to try to summarize those as we go through our process here. So the first key finding has to do with time and access. And I know that's super easy to read, but I am going to try to summarize this for you, and it's also a part of the report that you guys got as well. So first of all, students and teachers all value the library program. In fact, they value it so much that they want more access to it. One of the problems that we had is that our procedures and scheduling prevent access at the point of need of students. So basically, students in, in many of our schools, and not all of our schools, but mainly elementary students, are assigned a specific time during the week, and that is their library time. Beyond that, they, they don't have as many opportunities to check out books, and they don't have as many opportunities to explore the things that that library program can offer them. The second piece has to do with teacher-library collaboration. Library and teachers collab, collaborate all the time, they work on lessons together. And one of the pieces that's interesting about the library program is that it provides teachers with a lot of professional development. Teachers look to librarians as innovators and as a place where they can find out about new technologies, how to use those technologies, and so teachers are providing, or librarians are providing professional development to teachers on many different topics over the year, and not just around technology, but around literacy instruction, around what materials to select, and what kind of information they want to use in their classrooms. Our third topic, our third key finding, is that we have outdated library spaces as a district. Now, we have gone through great lengths at some of our schools. West High has a beautiful library, they just reeded it. Red Hollow has an amazing elementary library. But by and large, across the district, we saw that teachers, students, librarians, and administrators all felt like our spaces were outdated, and what they, it came up more than once, that possible bond issue could be another, the librarian, the library is on a, not libraries, libraries on a possible future bond issue may be an avenue, so that it's not dependent upon a PTO like what we saw at both Red Hollow and West High. We also, for our fourth one, we also recognize that communication across our district for things other than books in our library, what other programming is available. That came clear through parents, teachers, and administrators, as well as students, that we, we talk a lot through the library program about the information that we have, but we also need to talk about our other offerings, and that comes from the district level as well as individual buildings. Our fifth key finding that is that we have, this is really a celebration, we have an amazing amount of content in our libraries. We have access, and part of that is through digital content, through our partnership with St. Louis County Library. But what we still need is, we need more options for pleasure reading, and we need to be more intentional about social justice issues and getting content in there that will give kids opportunities to explore those. Now, we already actually have those, that content, we just haven't identified it in that way inside of our catalog. And that, one of the things that came out of this was that intentionality around that would be a good idea. For our sixth key finding, this has to do with library professional development. And one of the things that we found is that because of the changing nature of technology, specifically the changing nature of instructional practice, librarians need to have that continued just-in-time professional development, and so that, so that they can serve their building in a variety of different ways. We also found that our library evaluation is currently not representative of what we are asking librarians to do. And that is from not just the programming task, but the administrative task as well. Librarians truly run a small business inside of their building, and so they need, they're in charge of inventory, ordering, budget, all those pieces. And those are pieces that they are struggling to find balance between supporting teachers, having time to support teachers at teachers' point of need, supporting students, as well as doing these administrative tasks. The eighth one has to do with digital content, and we found that we have a lot of digital content, except that our students are only using it for score. And so it's really expanding that and trying to market some of that and give them different opportunities to experience some of that content, that's, that's one of the things we need, that we know that we need to work on. We also found that libraries are innovative spaces. Teachers and students go to libraries and seek out the librarian in order to help them with whatever they are looking to do. And not because they are the expert in that, but because they are able, they have, that is part of their role in the building, and they have the wherewithal to, and the technol, the technical knowledge in order to go about working through those things. And then finally, we have the idea that librarians support students and teachers in a variety of different ways. Specifically, they support them in critical thinking, digital citizenship, research, and literacy skills. So all of those literacy skills that we talked about earlier, each one of those becomes an important piece. Now, when I came up here, I gave you a summary sheet of the recommendations that we plan to give. It is also linked up there on, in that URL. And I'm just going to, again, summarize each of these topics, because there's an awful lot of stuff there. But I really want to kind of showcase the different things that are important as a part of that. So we have five topics of recommendations for our program. The first one is advocacy, and I will go through each of these. First one is advocacy, second is responsiveness to community, instruction program, educational leadership, and professional development, as well as those library spaces. To get started, I want to talk about advocacy. And as we talk about advocacy, think about this not in terms of, it is certainly advocating for students and advocating for the programming that they need, but it also has to do with that clear communication of the role librarians. Librarians do a somewhat poor job of advocating for themselves, truly, and, and really letting people know. And that goes back to that communication. So as we think about this, there are multiple avenues for communication. We need to continue to think about equity of access to both print and digital materials. We've come a long way with that, but we still have to continue to push forward. We need to talk about equity of experience with digital tools and materials. Right now, it is very dependent on which teacher a student has as to what their experience is going to be in technology. And that's not just in Parkway, that is, what we found is, that is nationwide. Teachers who are into technology, their kids have experiences. What library, one of the rules of librarians is to really advocate for student use of technology in the classroom. And then finally, as a district, we need to outline what the role of the library is in the digital age. Moving on to the second, uh, key, to the second topic of recommendation, it has to do with that responsiveness to the community. And when we think about responsiveness to the community, what I like to think about is that we are responsive because we have our finger on the pulse of what's going on in that building. We know what our kids need, we know what our teachers need, we know what our administrator needs, and we know what our parents need, as they come in and they are working and looking for opportunities to help their kids. So that can be done in a lot of different ways, through the CSIP, through budget. Advocating for student privacy is a big topic now. Scheduling and using flexible scheduling to give kids opportunities to use, to come in at their point of need, as well as developing our print and digital collections so they can access stuff outside of the school day, and finding that intentional time for administrative tasks, so that librarians can be available when they are able for, for students and teachers. Our third topic is instruction and programming, and that instruction and programming, what we are really discussing has to do with, every decision that we make in the library program has to support classroom instruction. And that support of classroom instruction helps us provide that relevant programming. So we need to continue to evaluate and update our curriculum, as well as really discover and explore opportunities to give kids experiences around creativity, exploration, and discovery. And there's lots of ways that we can do that, but those are just some of the topics that are in there. Our fourth topic is around educational leadership and professional development. I've already said that our librarians are seen as developers, they are seen as instructional leaders. And so what we are looking for them to do, our librarians, this is an action item for them, is to look and seek out opportunities to be leaders in their building, and not just in their building, but at the district level, at the regional and state level, as well as at the national level, and lead through our library program to showcase, not just what we're doing, but what library programs can be for, for libraries around the country. So that is to provide ongoing support for our teachers, as well as seeking those opportunities for leadership. Our last one has to do with those library physical spaces. And really what this is about is, is about making modern library spaces and creating opportunities for multi-use spaces. Now, what that may mean is that we have a quiet area over here, we have a collaboration area over here, we have a creation area over here, but each one of those areas is all housed in that same space and gives kids multiple opportunities when they come into the library to experience the library in a variety of different ways. These five program recommendations are really topics that have a lot of stuff underneath them, and I think that speaks to the nature of the librarian and the influence that they have on their building. Which leads me right back to what does it mean to be a librarian in the digital age? It means lots of things, and truly, we don't have an answer for this, because the digital age is always changing, and we are always, it's a moving target, but we're closer to an answer. We have discussion points, we have topics that we can really rally around. Which brings us back to Nancy Pearl and her amazing shushing action. And with that shushing action, this is not the librarian of the future in Parkway. This is not the librarian that we're looking for, this is not the library program that we're looking for. What we are looking for is that place, programming, and professional, to bring all those pieces together, to really give kids opportunities to experience the library in different ways, to experience school in different ways, and to really think about all school has to offer. So through these recommendations, we feel as though that this will help us to continue to move our library program forward, to give kids relevant experiences inside of our schools, as well as help them make good decisions when they walk out our doors. So through this, we feel as though we are going to be, to continue to be a leader both locally and nationally through our library program. And with that, I would love to answer any questions you have. So right now, I don't have exact numbers, but we are really heavy on paper. And part of the reason that we're really heavy on paper is because we haven't been able to ensure access for all kids through digital devices at this point. So as we move into our AL program, our Access Learning Program today with Chromebooks, that is giving more of that, and that is becoming, digital content has to be one of those strategies. So we are really heavy, I would say we are probably eighty percent, twenty percent, if I just had to guess, eighty percent paper.
And is there a good demand for paper, I mean, you know, what's the demand?
So right now, because of access, there's a huge demand for paper. And, and really, that's, that's where we have, that's where we have been. That is changing, though, and what we are seeing is especially as students who are young have experiences with digital content as they are rising in the gray level, we are seeing them not shy away from paper, but incorporate paper and digital as one and be able to move back and forth between them. And truly, that's what we want. We want them to be able to choose the medium that best works for them, whether it is paper or digital. And we're doing a lot of work in that through, through the AL program, as well as through just our classrooms, as we, as we use more digital content as a whole. But library books right now, we are still very paper-based.
So as kids are learning how to be kind of information consumers and content consumers, are we helping them learn how to differentiate between fact and opinion, and kind of how to engage with people?
Totally. That is one of the biggest things, that is one of the biggest roles in the library right now, especially at secondary and the E. What we're seeing right now is we are educating as many adults as we are kids around what, the fact and opinion, and how to, how to tell. Some, some of that includes how to, how to read a video, how to read a YouTube video. So much content, digital content is now on YouTube. How do we decipher that, and how do we really come together and, and figure out, is this propaganda? Is this fact? Are there facts in here? And so there's lots of strategies that we've been working through and on with that, so yes.
And one question I just, for explanation.
Sure.
Under one of the, advocate for student privacy.
Yeah. So basically, advocate for student privacy, it is under our responsiveness to the community. With, as, as we move into more digital spaces, it is more important than ever that we pay attention, as adults, as educators, to how the organization, the company, wherever that content is coming from, how they are using our kids' information.
Okay.
And so that, that's really what we're focusing on and try to, and try to, as like, as a library program, recognize and talk to people about it, not just hope that it's happening.
So it's more about how other companies are taking, using?
Right, and how to teach kids how to be.
Okay.
Responsible with their own stuff as well.
And others see important.
Absolutely.
Cool, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Along with my advancement to digital citizenship would mean topic three. I know Jason and a few other staff members regularly talk to different groups. Is, has there been any discussion in, as far as introducing that into some type of library curriculum where, where kids hear that message more frequently?
Absolutely. And it actually is part of our library curriculum right now. It is one of the topics that they go through. We are, we have, you've been using common sense media as our, as our content, as our lesson topics that really give us, give us the opportunity to talk about more things. When, when we talk about digital citizenship right now, you ask kids, they're going to talk about one or two things. They're going to talk about internet safety, being safe online, they're going to talk about cyberbullying. But there's so many other pieces to it. Managing your own digital footprint. There's lots of adults who don't manage their footprint well. So like, that's one of the conversation pieces. Fiscal responsibility online, how, how does that work? Protecting your own identity, don't share your password with other people. Like, those are the kind of topics that librarians are doing lessons on, and they're going into schools and doing lesson, they're going, sorry, classrooms and doing lessons there. Southwest Middle was one of the schools that recently, on one of our late start days, the entire day after that late start was a digital citizenship day, and they went through, and they really made an intentional effort. As we have been working with Chromebooks and putting Chrome on Chromebooks in the classrooms, that is becoming more a part of the conversation. And one of the approaches that we're taking is to have teachers, to empower teachers to share their digital lives with students. And what I mean by that is not to, you know, like, friend everybody on Facebook. What I mean by that is that they talk through the decisions that they're making as adults. So even as they are up in front of a board and they're doing a search, why are they going through and why are they making the decisions they make around what words they're using to search, as well as how they manage their own profile online? And it doesn't, it's not a whole lesson, it's just part of the conversation and part of what's going on in the classroom.
If you had all the money in the world, what type of fiscal changes would you make to our library spaces?
So I think that, kind of like I was talking about, having those multiple zones inside of our library. I don't, I don't think we need to, part of, one of the problems that's going on right now is because of the Port Institute's ethnicality, for example. Their library actually shrunk this year because they had to put a classroom in it. And, and that's okay, but that means that that zone, that area for kids to explore is no longer there. And that's happening, that's happening in other places too, not quite as dramatic as that most of the time is temporary. But as we think about the, the types of experiences we want to give kids in library, we want to have flexible seating so that that seating can move. One of the biggest things we hear from kids is they want soft seating. I would look at, there are a lot of different models. We have one of, an award-winning city library in St. Louis that is amazing, that was redone a number of years ago, that is around that model. And that has been, they have different spaces for different things. So that's what I would
Which one is that?
It's the, it's the city library, right downtown, right across from the memorial, I don't remember what, Soldier Memorial, it's right across from Soldier Memorial. It's, if you go in it, it's beautiful. And they have done an amazing job of mixing the traditional library with a modern feel of it and creating multiple types of spaces. So I truly think we need a creativity space. We need an opportunity for kids to create, we need a space to do that makerspace stuff that we're doing right now. And we also still need that quiet space where kids can work and read and, you know, kind of explore content personally as opposed to collaboratively.
How are we doing in bringing down, when you talked earlier about the elementary, you know, century of time? There are some changes in that agreement right now?
There are, there are changes that are occurring. There's, and, and it really depends on school. We go back and forth between having fixed schedules and flexible schedules for librarians, and it really depends on each school. And, and what it depends on in a lot of cases are things like lunch duty and that, that are pulling librarians out of the library, things like coverage for kindergarten and primary grades specifically, where they are the release time for those rates, which also means that when a librarian is doing lessons around information literacy or media literacy or something like that, then they don't have the, the teacher doesn't have the opportunity to hear that too, and that's an influence point that we may essentially miss. So, yes, we're making progress, we still have, we still have a long way to go.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, just wrapping up. 15.0 work session, there is none. 16.0 call for special meeting, there is none. 17.0 next scheduled close meeting. The next anticipated close session will be held on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2017, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the close session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0 recess, 19.0 close session, none. 20.0, they have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5.0, denied, but thank you very much.